Call the meeting in order. Calling the meeting in order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, religious stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We have 14 people signed up to speak. Typically at work session, it's only six minutes. So we are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend that timeframe to allow that. If possible, if there's any groups that could consolidate and have a spokesperson to speed up, like if you're in the neighborhood and you have the same issue, that would be great just to lessen the timeframe for everybody. If not, I'm looking to do three minutes per person, which would be a total of 42 minutes. Do I have a motion on that? Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we'll have 42 minutes. If the groups, if anybody would like to consolidate, I'm going to give a few minutes to allow that organization. Like I said, three minutes. When you appear, we do have some cards to help. A yellow card when one minute's left, 30 seconds red card, and then the buzzer will go off when it's three minutes. Then we're going to, I might kind of switch things up a little bit because I know two people want to speak right away for health considerations and allow them to speak. And then Dr. Knoll will get up and talk about some open enrollment and then the people can go consolidate if they would like to. If they don't, we have the time as well, if that makes sense. So, so other rules when we're speaking to the board, please say your name and your address so that we have that on the record and the three-minute timeframe. And no, we don't allow disparaging of individuals on that. You can be mad at the board. You can't be mad at individuals. And so, and the three-minute timeframe. So I'll start with Ms. Megan, Mrs. Megan Steever, please. Yep, and yep, just come up to the mic. Please don't touch if you can. And that way, people who might be watching from home can hear you as well.
I'm a visual person, so it's going to kind of stink for people that doesn't come.
Thank you. No, I'm visual too.
Thank you. All right. So my name is Megan Steever. I'm here representing myself and parents west of the Ellis Road. I'm here to address the middle school options and the high school options. And I'm here to talk about balance. So this first sheet, look at it. It is a copy of the school attendance area policy. It lists the five factors. And so that's what I'll be speaking to here. Now, if you look at the second sheet, it shows middle school option A2 and middle school option B. And in red, that is my area. I am just south of 26th and west of Ellis in those pocketed areas. The area that is the Lenox land that just got annexed in. And in regard to the factors, I want to address growth first because the board indicated the reason for making the change, modification, was because of potential growth. So let's look at the next sheet. And I realize that we all read the news. This is a snippet of an Argus Leader article that states that there could be 2,000 students added to the Sioux Falls School District. Incorrect. Next sheet, please. The actual five-year growth in Lenox swap area is 24 kids in the next five years. I refer back to the Boundary Task Force meeting two on January 29, 2020. The city of Sioux Falls, Sam Treblecock from planning and their GIS expert Chris Anderson, 30 minutes into that video, discussed growth. There will be 300 units in the next five years. And they basically explained it, laid it out. These are areas that already have the infrastructure in place. And that's why they're expecting the 300. Over the next 10 to 25 years, there could be 1,300 units. So I think perhaps maybe the term unit and student got intermixed. But I can understand where you're coming from when you're concerned with growth. But if you've referred to that policy, and it basically states within the next five years, we need to look at growth. And if we look at middle school option A, the original, within the next five years, we're still going to be lower than middle school option B in terms of population. And I think that's why the realtor on the board kind of probably, maybe I balled it, I don't know, and just noticed that the land was not going to produce 2,000 students. And I think that's what Doug Morrison was referring to at the last meeting, that we do have the room for the growth. Next sheet, we have middle school option A and middle school option B. Regardless...
Thank you, Megan. That is three minutes, so.
That, three minutes?
Yeah, that's been three minutes.
Okay. Does anyone want to give up their time?
Okay.
Okay. So I have a...
Your name was?
Debbie.
Thank you. So just stop the timer. I'm not timing you. I just want to make sure we keep this straight. Thank you, Debbie. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So the next sheet, I show middle school option A and middle school option B side by side. Now, the red areas are the areas that are west of Ellis Road and south of 12th Street. These are, and if we're looking at the policy, we're looking at, we want to keep contiguous neighborhoods together. So if we're looking at areas to move, out of all the areas to move, these are not contiguous to anything. We have black areas, which I circled, that would be possible candidates and more appropriate for moving. But, you know, there's two ways to look at the factors. And one is in terms of how many children are impacted, and the other is in terms of severity. And community is extremely important. What we're doing here is separating these kids from their school community farther north. And so the next sheet shows these areas kind of more of a close-up, where you have contiguous candidates that are potential. So if you go to the next sheet, I have a page from the city of Sioux Falls Long Range Transportation Plan. This has census data. And so one of the other arguments against the middle school option A was diversity, socioeconomic status. One of the issues is that in doing the calculations, they use schools that are elementary that are 100% free and reduced lunch, which means that not all of those kids necessarily have to qualify for that. Which means if you have a school with approximately 500 kids, your socioeconomic status calculations could be off by 10% or more. So we use the census data to supplement. And what I see here, their areas west of Ellis Road are diverse. Unfortunately, this includes all of Hartford, Crooks, West Ellis. But then we have the area of Oscar Hall, which is very diverse. So the next is a sheet of walking zones. This sidewalk, Safe Route to School and Signal just got installed. So these are walking routes, and you're taking them away. So we have more appropriate places to take. In regards to the high school options, I do want to talk about balance. So let's go to the next sheet. We have a group that submitted what's called our option, our high school option D. Now, I want to talk about how it's not perfect, but I think it fixes a couple issues, walking routes and safety. Now, in these other handouts, if we look, there's areas that...
Same.
We're good? All right.
Thank you. You know, if anything you didn't get through to us, if you'd like to follow up with an email, or that would be appropriate as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to give up time?
Kent Alberti will be next. And then Kent, will you please state your address as well as your name, for those who don't know who he is, our former school board member and co-chair of the task force. So thank you.
Thank you. Kent Alberti, 3000 West 34th Street. And I'm here tonight to, first of all, compliment you on how you have handled this process. It's been a long couple of years that this has been being discussed. It's been hard work. You have been diligent about what you have done. And I compliment you on that. One of the comments that was made at the last school board meeting was that diversity wasn't taken into consideration by the task force. As a member of that task force, I want to say that's not accurate. We did take diversity into consideration. We talked about free and reduced lunch. We talked about the demographics of our district. The demographic information is available on our district website. The board gets a report on that every year. That has not been ignored. That was inaccurate, not a fact. We took it into consideration. We talked about how can we best serve every student in our district. And yes, our district is made up of neighborhoods. Absolutely. Wouldn't disagree with that for a moment. In this process, there will be people that get exactly what they want. There will be people who have to accept compromise. That's what life's about. And to say that there are better options and go with option A, B, C, D, and E, that could go on for months, years. A decision needs to be made. We have a $190 million bond issue. We have a commitment to our community to do what's best for every student. And I applaud the organization. I applaud the families who have banded together to work on this. But how many families are there out there who send their kids to school every day and are glad they're getting educated, glad that there's a meal for them, and they're getting the best education that we can offer? And I just think, don't let... And I just think, don't let a small group dictate the decision that you make. This is the long view. This is the visionary decision. Don't let a few neighborhoods take you away from that goal. Thanks.
Thank you, Kent. The... Does anybody need time to go consolidate? And if you don't need time to go consolidate, I'll just keep going on with public input because you might want to stay and listen to what Dr. Noold has to say. Otherwise, I'll excuse you to go consolidate. Okay. Just keep moving. Awesome. I will move on next to April Vanderwell. And if you would state your name and address, and if you are in favor or in opposition either way, if you would be clear if it's middle school or high school because we have similar letters and numbers, too, just so it's clear for the record. Is that okay, Dr. Noold, if we just get into that? Because then people don't have to be excused, and we just go right into it. Thank you for understanding. April, thank you.
My name is April Vanderwell, and I live at 3719 South Jesse James Court. I have two, soon-to-be-three, students in the district and have taught at Washington for nine years. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of Washington high school teachers and parents. At the end of this crazy school year, two of my colleagues and I spent six hours driving around Sioux Falls and personally visiting 30 of our students while social distancing. It was emotional and wonderful, but it also reminded me of the great disparity of wealth we have in our community. We drove to a million-dollar home, and we drove to a home that was missing chunks of siding and had cardboard window panes. The students who live in those two homes are very different. They are different races, social classes, genders, speak different languages. But I remember that they once worked together on an assignment when we were studying Romeo and Juliet. They were partnered together, and they had to decide who was the most responsible for the tragedy in the play. They had to defend their position and connect the scenario to real life. This particular student duo decided that it was the collective group of adults who were responsible in the play. And they connected it to their own lives by explaining how they also felt that often the adults in their lives were calling the shots, and it left them feeling like they had little control. I love this interaction between these two students whose paths may have never crossed outside of my second-period class. These two very different students were struggling with the same thing, and they got to see how similar they were despite being beautifully different. These interactions are a strength of all of our high schools, and diversity of all kinds is our greatest strength. As a district, we have a unique opportunity to level the playing field as much as possible for all kids. As our mission statement says, "The world is changing, and unfortunately, it's not leading to less economic disparity, it's widening the gap." Our schools can really be the great equalizer. I appreciated that last week President Mickelson made a motion to form a committee to look into the automatic open enrollment of special programs to certain schools. I know the board wants to strive for equity, which is why priority number one for the task force included balancing socioeconomic status across secondary schools. I feel like this message was heard last week. Option A2, however, not only overloads two buildings, but also increases the economic disparity between the two of the buildings by almost 20%. From my understanding, based on Vice President Ryder's comment on Facebook, part of the purpose of A2 is to, quote, "potentially make more open enrollment spots available for those who may want to open enroll and stay at Roosevelt." To give the numbers on that, in option A2, Roosevelt would have about 550 fewer students than Washington, even though buildings are the exact same. And I assume, based on that comment, that these spots would be used for open enrollment for families who did not want to go to Jefferson. Instead, we need to best... The best possible balance of socioeconomic diversity and equal distribution of student numbers at all schools in order to limit the balance that open enrollment can have on multiple buildings. Every high school in our city is outstanding. Our teachers will offer a quality education to every student who walks through the doors. We love them. That's why we do what we do. It's not about one school versus another. It's about equity for all students. Thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job, and I would not want to be in your seats.
Next, we have Samantha Small, please.
Hi, my name is Samantha Small, and I reside at 5809 South Sundowner Avenue. I first want to thank the school board, district staff, and Boundary Task Force for all of their work and time that you guys have taken to come up with what is best for all students in the Sioux Falls School District, as well as the fellow RF Pettigrew Elementary families for allowing me to speak on their behalf this evening. Recently, residents in our community have raised their voice to resurrect a preliminary boundary option named Version 2, which was presented to the Boundary Task Force during their first meeting. Version 2 is an option that uses skip busing to specifically send a portion of Pettigrew to George McGovern Middle School. However, in the second Task Force meeting, the task force almost unanimously voted Version 2 last out of all the middle school boundary options presented to them. Out of the five priorities, Version 2 only meets one. Specifically, priorities numbers 2 through 5 are not met for the following reasons. In priority 2, which is the student safety and well-being, as the Pettigrew area is proposed to be the sole section set to be skip-bussed in Version 2, equity is not ensured to our families who would bear the burden of being bussed in such a manner. In addition, Version 2 does not keep cohorts together as only approximately 2/3 of Pettigrew would be sent to George McGovern. This means our children would attend George McGovern for middle school only to later attend Roosevelt for high school. This correlates to additional complexities with keeping our children's connections with their classmates. At the last board meeting, some board members did not favor option B for Oscar House students for similar cohort concerns. Priority 3, which addresses budget considerations, while we do understand that we are in a current bus zone for Memorial Middle School, we strongly suspect that skip busing our area, which would pass Memorial enrup to George McGovern, is going to increase transportation costs to the district and decrease efficiency. Another priority, priority 4, which is natural borders and school boundary lines, the skip busing does not place a priority on proximity to a school as you're not using natural borders for all of the middle school boundaries in that situation. The additional option, priority, excuse me, is priority 5, which is to accommodate growth and change. We collectively concur that Version 2 does not truly accommodate the growth and change as we've been briefed by city planners that the northwest part of town of our district is where they're expected to see the most growth in the future. So if you were to move the Pettigrew families to that area, eventually, once the growth does occur, what would happen to our families in that Pettigrew area? We are also concerned about traffic and maintenance concerns for the roads. So thank you for taking the time to allow the time and consideration on this.
Thank you. Next up is Melanie Zeeman.
All right. I don't know if you need to know now, but Neale's going to give me this time.
Thank you. That helps us. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. I'm Melanie Zeeman, and I live at 7601 West Chesapeake Lane. And I will have a senior, a freshman, and twins going into 7th grade. First of all, thank you so much for all of your work and to the task force because I know this is not an easy job. So we appreciate everything. I'm here representing 53 families in favor of option C. I know today you're doing more A, A2, but it's all kind of related. And most of those families are from 26th Street to the Greenway, and that's on both sides of Sertoma, the east and the west side. And we have some people from the Lowell area, too. Today, I'm going to be kind of referring more to 26th Street to the Greenway area. We know that no matter what, our kids are going to get a quality education. I'm a teacher in the district, and I truly believe that in my heart of hearts, that no matter what school they're at, it's going to be wonderful. Our biggest concerns are safety, and today I just kind of want to talk a little bit about that. One reason we bought our home where we did was because it's within walking distance to elementary, middle, and high school. And for that... For us, that was a safety issue because we knew our kids would be involved in a lot of different events. And it's kind of fun because we can actually hear the band playing in our backyard when they're practicing on the field. And so you know we live close when it's... When that's the situation. Last year during basketball practice, my son forgot something at home. And instead of fighting the traffic to try to drive home, he decided it would be faster to run home, get his whatever he forgot, and run back. And he successfully did that in under 15 minutes. And so that kind of just shows, getting there, getting his supplies, getting back, that's how fast it was. Because we are this close, safety is our number-one concern right now. And we've used a lot of data from Google, from things that all of you have put out. And right now, it's about an eight-to-10-minute walk to Roosevelt versus what would be a 1 hour and 27-minute walk to Jefferson. And as far as driving, it's anywhere between 2 and 4 minutes versus 13 to 15 minutes to Jefferson. And that is on a clear day when there's no snow, and it's... There are safe walking routes. And we have really young drivers, 14, 15, 16, 17-year-olds that are involved in things before school and late into the evenings, and you're crossing those busy intersections, and that makes a big difference. I do have a map, and I apologize, it's not really big, but I am going to just show it, and then I will give it to you to keep. But this is kind of our section right here. Here's Sertoma, so this is kind of our group that would be considered an option C. And the biggest thing I want you to recognize is that we took... We kind of just went smack dab in the middle. And we took a family right here, and if their child was to walk or drive to school, they would go from Leah to Sertoma to Roosevelt. And that's the distance right there. As you can see, we took the easiest roads to get to Jefferson. And you can see the difference. They'd go Leah to Sertoma, all the way over to 12, 12 to Marion to Jefferson. And so you can see the difference in just the length of time that it would take to get there and all of those safety factors involved. That's your three minutes. Three minutes, thank you. In a response from one of the board members to our group, she was discussing option A2, and she said, "From a safety perspective, having students drive the shorter distance to Lincoln High School makes more sense in that plan as does keeping them in their current attendance area. We would just request that same consideration be given in our situation because we have those very same concerns." The great thing is, option C won't disrupt anything in the balance. Enrollment would stay near 80% capacity for all of the high schools across the board. The free and reduced lunch numbers would all be very comparable when doing those numbers. And then keeping middle schools together would be kind of an issue because Memorial's going to be split up no matter what. I know at the last meeting you mentioned keeping the Discovery kids together, and that would be a vote for A versus C. As a teacher at Discovery, we build on those relationships, and we hope that they continue. But honestly, with our own children and with other kids, we see that the middle school and high school relationships are the ones that they take on a little bit longer, and they're going to be split no matter what, anyway. So to end, to close, Doug Morrison was asked at one of the work sessions, the June 3 work session, for his opinion. And I think that, at first, he was hesitant to give it, but then he said, well, this is a quote, "I think option C gives a natural border of 26th Street and T Ellis Road, and it more enables our high schools to look alike than any other option. Those are the recommendations that would probably accomplish the most and where we're trying to balance the enrollment." So I just ask you to please consider C. I know you were leaning toward A last time, but these are all the reasons that we feel, especially in the area of safety, that it would benefit many children, not just the ones in our area, but the ones in the schools already because it would eliminate over-enrollment and safety issues there. So thank you.
Next, we have Deana Kittleson. And please state your name and address, too.
Thank you very much. Deana Kittleson. And my address is 7,001 West Strabane Trail. We have two kids, both enrolled in public school. We have a son going into 10th grade at Roosevelt, and then we have a daughter going into 8th grade at Memorial. And I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Melanie discussed. I also was hoping to use this, but I'm nervous, so I'm just going to avoid technology and hold it up.
I don't blame you.
And give you guys copies afterwards. Okay. So anyway, but thank you guys for allowing us to speak tonight. And my comments, piggyback on what Melanie was saying, our... My house is in the area that Melanie was also talking about. I know we kind of had a little back and forth, and it was our fault for allowing there to be a misunderstanding as far as what area she was talking about. But what that did is it led us to just sort of highlight that little... It's not really a pocket area. It's just that east side of Sertoma. And I'll give... I'll leave this with you guys, and I have a couple other copies. But it ends up being this area here. And this is, you know, 26th Street. And then here's the drainage way here. And then Sertoma Avenue is the area. It's about, I think it's 100 homes that someone else is going to talk about. But one of the things that really struck us is about geography and about the... How safe it is from our area. What we did is we... One of the things, I'll leave... This is a very small area. If anybody is familiar with STRAVA, it's just a GPS mapping. People use it running and biking and such. Anyway, this was a walk from our neighborhood to the door of Roosevelt, and it's .76 miles away. So that's from our house. And that's our... So our neighborhood is... From the middle of our neighborhood, it's one mile from a door to the door of Roosevelt. And then, so... And then it talks about, you know, it was 12 minutes. It was a leisure walk. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then the primary thing is the... Is the level of safety that's already built into that area. The entire area from 26th Street at the north, coming down Strabane Trail to Roosevelt's front door, is one continuous sidewalk. There is one street that we have to cross, which is 32nd Street, where there is a traffic light and a pedestrian crosswalk, and it is a residential road. It is not a main road. And beyond that, that entire one-mile distance is one continuous sidewalk. And so that is really the main thing I wanted to highlight. And of course, the .7-mile geographical distance. So anyway, we are 4C, we're 4A, we're 42, or whatever. Just to make logical sense, I understand there's a lot of things to look at, not just geography. But being considerably less than a mile from the school, we just wanted to highlight that and the safety of the sidewalk. So thank you, guys.
Okay. Next, thank you. We have Greg Michelson. If you would state your name and address as well, please.
Yep. My name is Greg Michelson. 1804 South Strabane Circle. So I don't actually live too far from Deana. So I'm going to cover the same... More different tapping points. But Roosevelt High School is surrounded by four major roads: Sertoma, 41st Street, Marion, and 26th Street. Most every student in that four lane, four roads, goes to Roosevelt except for our little corner at Sertoma and 26th Street with the border behind the creek. I emailed you all last week with the map of that. So it only makes sense, like Deana said, that it's a safe walking route. And she said only about 100 residents, 100 homes, housing units. This is a very older neighborhood, so a lot of older families. A lot of these families have kids that have already graduated, so there's not a lot of new growth in this area. I emailed Doug last night to get some numbers, and there are currently 20 students from this corner enrolled in Roosevelt. And those numbers decrease, based on his numbers, through the 6th grades. They get smaller every year, the number of students enrolled from this neighborhood. So it only makes sense to, for safety reasons, to either go with C because that would solve our corner problem or amend this little tiny corner of the Roosevelt neighborhood to include in it A or A2. The demographic change would be minuscule because you're talking less than 1% of the population of Roosevelt to keep these kids safe, whether they're driving or whether they're walking. And you've already made, with the option A2, you've already shown your concern for students in close proximity to their school and their safety for getting there. So hopefully with that, you guys would consider just amending this little tiny corner if you don't go with option C.
Thank you. And you guys don't envy your position on this because you're not going to make everybody happy. Thank you for the work you guys do.
Mary Ann Mergen, you're next. Name and address, please.
My name is Mary Ann Mergen. I live at 2221 South Monticello Avenue. My home is actually on the corner of Monticello and Chesapeake. I just want to speak to three things. Living in that neighborhood, I know you've talked about the importance of keeping neighborhoods together. 26th Street is really the dividing line. You've kind of used that waterway between Chesapeake and 32nd. And living in that neighborhood, that is really the only block. The Chesapeake... The Chesapeake, Grinnell, 32nd, and Wheatland, that is the block where children ride, that is the block where walks happen, just because of the sidewalks in our area and the new construction going on against Ellis, the, its commercial construction. So, those neighborhood, even though there's that waterway there, those neighborhood connections between those streets is very strong and tight, living there. Another thing that I want to bring up, I know my situation is not unique, and you aren't making a decision on my personal situation, but I'd like to tell you what it is, because it's very representative of the families that live there. I will have three children in three different schools for three years. So, I have, next year my daughter will be in 9th grade, my son will be in 6th grade, and my other son will be in 3rd grade. So, in the morning to get everybody to school, I will drive to Pettigrew, then drive to Roosevelt, and then drive to Memorial. If I'm driving to Jefferson, which Roosevelt is 1.9 miles according to Google Maps from my house, Jefferson is six miles. The timing to make all that happen on those busy streets is going to be very tight, so it's the choice of, do I make my Memorial Middle School, 8:55 start child, get in the car with me at 7:45 when I need to start this morning drop off? Again, my personal situation is not something that you should make your decision on, but it's very representative of what families are going to be facing in our little pocket, and it's not even a pocket in our little neighborhood. So, I don't envy you, I thank you for the work that you've done. You've done a wonderful job, but I just, I hope you still consider option C, because it's, it's important. Thank you.
Next is Nicholas Levise, Levise? Thank you. And state your address, too, please. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. So my name is Nicholas Levise, I live at 913 South Fonson Avenue, and I will be a junior at Washington High School this coming fall. And I'd like to address the high school band equity issues that I highlighted in my letter as they relate to open enrollment and boundaries, and then I'll give my inputs with regards to our new boundary option. So my intention with speaking today is to share some insight that relates to the equity of high school band enrollment in our schools that wasn't addressed in my letter. So upon reading state law, district policy, and the SDH, SDHSA constitution and bylaws, it became clear to me that changing open enrollment eligibility would not present an easy course of action to mitigate the equity issues we see in our high school enrollments. However, I was unable to find any law, bylaw, or policy that would prevent the district from setting a reasonable capacity on the number of band students enrolled at any of our high schools. This is just one thought that I've had regarding a possible solution that would decrease the incentive to open enrollment to any particular high school for fine arts. However, I would welcome and highly encourage the board and our policy committee members to explore practical solutions to the concerns I mentioned in my letter. With regards to our boundaries, knowing that creating socioeconomic diversity is a goal of our new boundaries, the following concerns with option A2 when open enrollment seem to be apparent. So upon comparing the socioeconomic predictions between the options, the number of students on free or reduced lunch at Lincoln High School decreases by 7 to 8% for options A, A2, and C when open enrollment is factored in as compared to the base headcount. And conversely, with Washington and Jefferson, they both gain about 1% for free or reduced lunch enrollment with the open enrollment included, in addition to the fact that they already have a notably more diverse socioeconomic status. So these numbers show that the effect of open enrollment on socioeconomic status is significant, and as Vice President Ryder pointed out, it is essential to maintaining strong PTAs and PTOs at all of our schools and providing the best quality learning environment possible. I believe that decreasing the base headcount of Roosevelt by nearly 300 students compared to A, with A2 as opposed to A, will prove detrimental to Jefferson, as greater capacity will allow for greater open enrollment under our current policy, and it is sensible to predict that a very high number of students will want to open enrollment to Roosevelt if given the chance, leading to possibly more of a socioeconomic gap between our high schools. So considering the fact that option A2 increases the capacity for open enrollment to Roosevelt, I can't support it, knowing that open enrollment creates some socioeconomic enrollment issues that will hinder Jefferson's activities, education, and means of support. Unless the district updates its open enrollment policy, I'm in support of option A at this point. This option creates less of an opportunity for open enrollment into Roosevelt based on capacity, because the base headcount is a little higher, and it decreases likelihood of open enrollment based on the concept of keeping middle school cohorts together, and so the students will tend to want to go with their friends. I thank the board and our district leadership for listening to my concerns, and I implore an exploration into policy of open enrollment based, sorry, exploration of policy that would limit the negative effects of open enrollment at our high schools, and I thank the board for their openness and transparency and consideration for all 24,000 students in our district. Thank you.
I just want to say, I know I'm not supposed to comment after public input, but thank you for showcasing what awesome students we have in our district and...
Thank you so much.
And I think you covered in three minutes what other people took six minutes to cover, so.
Are you in debate? You might want to try. Okay, next on our agenda, I'm probably not saying it right, Nezla? Nezla, thank you, sorry, Nezla Smith Reynosa? Okay, thank you. And state your address as well, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nezla Smith Reynosa. My address is 803 South Waltz Avenue. Well, I'm here to say thank you for taking your time to listen to me and to the rest of the community today, and to take our input into consideration. You have a very difficult and important job ahead of you, and thank you for your service. I am speaking today as a spokesperson for a group of Spanish immersion parents who have children that have either been identified as honors or are on track to take accelerated high school level classes in middle school. The purpose of the Spanish immersion program is to graduate fluent Spanish speakers into our community, and it is important that this includes some of our gifted children. Attrition to the honors program was an issue before honors programming was offered to the Spanish immersion students in middle school, leaving families to choose one or over the other. While we prefer that honors and Spanish remain together under one roof, if that cannot happen, we do support a resolution stating that honors programming and the currently offered honors high school classes will continue to be offered at Edison. This resolution will allow current and future honors identified Spanish immersion students to remain in the Spanish immersion program. Thank you again for your consideration.
Jan Schaefer, please, and state your address. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jan Schaefer, 3000 East 33rd Street. I have four graduates from Washington High School, one current student in Washington, classmate of that guy going until 11th grade, one daughter at Harvey Dunn Elementary, God's gift to the old mom, just finished kindergarten. So, very exciting. Mostly I just wanted to say, the last meeting I was, I sat here, and I was surprised at the hour option that came up at the last minute, and now, since that meeting, the option A2 that popped up, and the difference that the A to A2 made for Washington High School seemed to bump up the less fortunate through the Washington High School. Just that northeast part, Whittier and Washington, seemed to take a beating a lot of the times when we make these changes. And the other, my son Davis did go through the honors program at Edison and chose to attend Washington, and I think that's an awesome thing. He provides diversity at Washington, because many of the honors students have gone to Lincoln. And all of my children took higher level math classes in middle school, and many of them, before they graduated, had to travel, and we all did fine. We drove to Edison, they took a cab back to Patrick Henry, they took their class. The next class was also a high school level class, they did fine. Some of their friends went over to Lincoln High School, took the high level math class, did fine. So, I don't think that that's a big deal. Sometimes we had to travel because there weren't enough kids at Patrick Henry to have a class there. That's just kind of one of the things that happens. Good for you guys, have fun at it. Just, you know, when the, when the numbers seem to change significantly, like my friend from Washington said, I hope you take a second look.
I have to ask, you must be Lincoln's mom?
I am.
Okay, thank you for putting that together for me. Okay, last but not least, Mark Muir, is he in the other room? Is he in the, okay, thank you. He's, is somebody getting him out?
You might have heard.
Okay. Mark, you're up, if you can hear me.
He can't talk from in there, does he know that?
Awesome, I see him. Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
You could just speak from out there, we probably could have heard you, Coach.
Thanks for letting me come back.
You bet.
I'm sure you get bored, but I'd like to say...
Oh, would you say your name and address? Sorry, we weren't counting.
3509, 3509 South Genevee.
Thank you.
So, I'm glad you had me back, and I appreciate your time. I know you're elected to represent all the kids. I've heard some things about this not being transparent, one of the most transparent processes, because of the information that's been put out by the committee and then the last few weeks, you also. At the last board meeting, they stated that due to the priority of balancing status across our schools, that they do not support moving Whittier back to WHS or whatever, and I know that's somewhat controversial. And I think the most important statement made by a board member was, the more we can make these buildings equal, we can help impact our students in a positive way, and I believe that. I've been in education a long time, well, I'm not anymore, so, anyway. Option A2, and the young man did a lot better job than I did talking about that. I was afraid I was going to have to follow him, but to me, it's blatant. It's blatant that others will have priority over some others in the district. And it, whatever. I know the policy's been around a while, but I really believe it needs to be changed. It allows schools to cherry pick kids. I mean, the plan states they'll take at least 175 from Washington, 75, 175 from Roosevelt, and I'm sure there'll be a number of kids from Jefferson. I believe if that policy maintains, we're going to have the same problem on the west side as I perceive we have on the east side. And I just think it's wrong. I do not dislike LHS. I do not dislike the Spanish immersion program. I do not dislike the, hey, nice job. I do not dislike the honors program. I think that there should be an honors program in every middle school. Simple solution. I think there should be an honors program in every, or excuse me, Spanish immersion program in every high school. And that can be done. We can move, people teach half day, whatever, but that needs to happen. We do not have an honors program in high school. Every school in this district that's a high school brings, brings forth a very excellent AP program, and they're all the same classes. We don't have an inferior school. I believe that the system we now have is inferior for the Sioux Falls Public Schools. We should have a common goal to raise everybody up. You know, I was going to go into about the mission of the board and the mission of the school district. Here's the mission: Make it happen. Let's treat everybody fairly. Let's do it right. Thank you.
I believe that's it for public input, so thank you very much for hanging with us on this. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Knold now, who's going to help educate the public about our open enrollment and program enrollment and so forth, so, and we're also asked him to do some scenarios to help explain, like, what could happen to certain students and so forth, because I think that might help explain some things to people as well, so And you don't have to see her address.
Have you shut the timer off?
Yeah.
I'll try. There is a document also that is included back there that does have some scenarios. If you did not get a copy of that, it is also going to be posted online, so you can have a copy. One of the questions we have coming in quite often through the Let's Talk or other email communication is about grandfathering, open enrollment, assigned schools, things of that nature. So this is a very, hopefully, quick overview of some of that information to go through with you, just so you're aware of that. The home attendance center, most all will know, that's where the parent of the student legally resides. Some questions have come in, especially in the last week here, as far as ownership of businesses or things like that. It has to be the legal residence of the child. That's how we determine the home attendance center of the, of the student. It's based on that legal guardian where they reside. Grandfathering, that at times is being confused with open enrollment and things that occur with the open enrollment. Grandfathering really is a term that, right now, is being utilized just in this boundary discussion. It could be utilized in other formats, but in this boundary discussion, as of now, and obviously this does not bind the board to anything, the discussion, discussion this last time was on seniors and seniors only. So if it was to remain that way, and they were grandfathered, that would allow those seniors to have a choice to remain in their current school of attendance when the new boundaries take effect, or stay at the school that they're currently attending. So that's the grandfathering part. They could go to the new home attendance center or remain at the current attendance center. Usually we would send out a notification to them prior to the date that open enrollment starts, which is December 1st. They have to respond back to us by December 1st what their intention is to accept that offer to stay at their current attendance center or move to the new attendance center. And so that, we would figure out so that we knew what those numbers were in advance before we get to open enrollment time, which starts on December 1st. Open enrollment in and of itself is a state law through South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter 1328. And so, a question has come in quite often about open enrollment, and that's a process that we utilize, and really the state gives us that governance of capacity. And I'll talk about that a little bit more coming up, but we look at the school capacity, grade level capacity, class capacity, and a program capacity. And I'll talk about that, but that's three of the key terms. One other part is also specialized programs. And really, a specialized program is a specific program that's located at a school. For example, Spanish immersion. It is a program that's located at Edison Middle School. So if a child is accepted into the Spanish immersion, or they apply to get into Spanish immersion and they're accepted in that, if they're in the middle school, it's located at Edison Middle School. So that's a specialized program or program placements. That's where we place the program. That difference is different than the assigned school, per se. The assigned school, we will have that as an option for students as they go through that are open enrolled. So if a child is open enrolled to a specific middle school, let's say they're open enrolled to Whittier, we have to then assign a school where they would go to for high school, because if they're open enrolled from Harrisburg, they don't know what that next step will be unless we assign what it is. It is not that they would have a choice of any of the high schools to go to, we assign that in advance. So we know when they start as an elementary student, open enrolled, regardless if that's in district or out of district, if they're open enrolled to a specific elementary, they know at this point in time what the middle school will be that they would go to. And then if they're open enrolled at that middle school, they know what high school they will be going to. So that's the assigned school for open enrollment purposes. There's also a portion in policy, and that was addressed a week ago, or just shortly over a week ago, by the board, that did allow or has allowed, and still does allow, individual programs that have been in place, specialized schools like All City Elementary. When a student is done with All City Elementary at that elementary level, they have been allowed to stay together as a cohort and go to an assigned school. That assigned school has been Edison. At the completion of a program or specialized school, that happens with a couple of those groups to be able to hold them together, or allow them the option to stay together. Much like other, the grandfathering, they'd be given a notification that by December 1st they have to resubmit back into us their intention on a form that we send them, whether they plan to stay or go to their home attendance center, which they have the option to do, or go to the potential assigned school that they could go to. And so really, that's where assigned schools come into play, where we have them for open enrollment, so people know where they're going to. And then we also have it for a couple of these specialized schools that when they end at a certain level, whether that be elementary or middle school, they do have an opportunity to stay together as a cohort. That is the portion... That is the portion that the board discussed a week ago of reviewing that portion of the policy to see if changes needed to be made. And that is a policy, and there's a format for policies to be reviewed, and we will take that forward through that review process. The next piece of it is open enrollment. There's a couple misconceptions out there that the boundary changes ends open enrollment. Right now, the Sioux Falls School District has every intention to honor all current open enrollment agreements. Obviously, the board could choose not to. I think we would have some legal issues to go through if that were to occur, because it is part of the law. And so, we do have intentions to continue forward to honor all open enrollment agreements that we currently have. So if a child is open enrolled to the elementary, regardless of those boundary changes, they would still be, we would honor that agreement to continue that open enrollment at the elementary. What middle school do they go to? That depends on what middle school is assigned to that elementary for the open enrollment process. Some of that could change, depends on capacity numbers, but they will know in advance what that avenue or pathway would be. So we will still continue to honor all our open enrollment agreements at every one of the levels, high school, middle school, and elementary, regardless of where the boundaries shift. The second piece of that, open enrollment for future, is it an option for families if space is available? Yes, it is. If space is available. And again, I go back to that state law. The state law allows us a few different ways to determine if there's state, or space available. That is in policy. If you get bored, you can read that policy. It's Policy JCA, and it's in the regulation portion of that. Applications are accepted starting December 1st of each year for that next school year. That's why it's important that a lot of this work is done, so that we can make sure the policies are in place for that December 1st, but even prior to December 1st, when we have to notify some of those different groups that they intend to stay at their current assigned school or go back to their home attendance center, because that does impact our numbers that we would utilize then. One last piece that I'll put on there, as I stated earlier, the state law does allow us to look at three things for open enrollment. One is building capacity, and we have set numbers for that. It also allows us to look at class size, so whether it's a ninth grade, eighth grade, seventh grade, but a class size, and then program capacity, because we have some specialized programs that'll have capacity numbers on them. And so just looking at one of those, building capacity. Currently, the building capacity numbers for each one of these schools is set very high. So I just have the high school up there on the top. High school, Lincoln 2100, Roosevelt 2200, Washington 2200, New Tech High 450. Obviously, once we open an additional school, those numbers will drop. And the intent was that those numbers would drop down, so that we do not have numbers that are in those 22, 23, 2400 per school. So we talk about, is it full? Is it at capacity? Can we approve open enrollments? It'll all depend on what those numbers are set at, whether there's space available for additional open enrollments. So the Sioux Falls School District does, at this point in time, have every intention to honor all current open enrollments that we have agreed to, and continue through that process. And as was stated by the board, we will review that policy as far as the assigned schools' process. Once a program ends, are the students still allowed to be assigned to stay together as a cohort? And that'll be reviewed later this fall. That is the information. Now, there was scenarios, multiple scenarios in here, that is in that document that you're welcome to read through. The key part of it is on two factors. One, if a student's out of school, are they allowed to stay there if they're open enrolled? Yes, they are. That's what we will currently follow as far as the state law. The second piece that always comes into is siblings. There is another piece of that that's in policy that does give sibling preference, and that's also in state law, but there is a sibling preference possibility. That applies if there's still space available at the school. So we still have to make sure that there's space available. Then that sibling preference can come into play if there's a student already at the school. If you have a current senior and the other student is an eighth grader, and the senior leaves that set school and the eighth grader coming in, they do not have sibling preference, because there's not a sibling currently at that school when they will enter at that grade. So sibling preference applies for anybody applying for an open enrollment. If they apply open enrollment, they have an older sibling, and by sibling, they have to live in the same household. If they have that same sibling, if they have a sibling in the same school, then they would have a sibling preference. So they would go to one of the top of the list as far as open enrollment criterias. We would look at that to see if there's space available, to see if it'd be approved or not approved. So that's kind of a general overview of open enrollment. It has not gone away. It's gonna remain the same as it has been, and will be based on capacity.
Any questions for Dr. Knoll? Thank you. I think that was very educational for the public, so I really appreciate your thoroughness in going over that. Doug, before I make you next, I'm gonna just have a few comments, so you can set up while I'm doing that. I just want, this was, quote was pointed out to me the other day, and I, it just really stuck with me, that Dr. Jack Keegan said that, do we want to be a school district, or do we want to be a district of schools? And while we're setting these boundaries, I think that's a very important quote for us to remember, is that we want to be a team. We don't want to pit schools against each other. We want all of them to succeed, and I know all the board members have that in mind, so I just, I just, that quote, I thought it was really neat that it's a former superintendent that said it, and I just wanted to bring that to attention. Many of you have mentioned the five guidelines that we used and the task force have been using, and everything for this development of our boundaries, and I just wanted to remind, not one has precedence. It's quality education for all students, student safety, well-being, budget consideration, natural borders as boundary lines, and to accommodate growth and change. So those five things always have to be the forefront of this, and not one overriding. We are, we'll probably start with some of the middle school discussions. We received a lot of feedback from the public, so thank you very much. So we, and I should say Doug and team, spent a lot of time doing some more data analysis for us as a board to take those into consideration. They were at the middle school and the high school level. We, there are many neighborhoods that reached out for a variety of reasons, but these are the ones that we basically pinpointed. The area southeast of Sioux Falls, south of 49th, and east of Sycamore near the Brerel House, many of these families open enrolled at LHS and drive as close as for them. That option did not come forward. The area west of Minnesota Avenue, north of 41st, and east of Western, south of 15th. These families, that kind of, that's what kind of started that A2 discussion on that. The Whittier area, north of 10th, east to Cliff, and west of I-229. These were the Washington students who were moved back to Lincoln, and then A2 came to fruition and looked at that. The JFK neighborhood requested to stay at Memorial and not be bused to Edison. We will go over those numbers tonight. The area south of 26th Street using, I'm calling it the Chesapeake Triangle, and that's the kind of name. And we did actually, thank you to Doug and team, include that east of Surtoma area that I know we had left out originally on that data points. We also had community members come forward with ideas, and Doug graciously ran some of those. We discussed last time the R option, and I think our board, we did not want to take that one. Another one was Joe Bachelor, and we ran those, and it was very similar to another one, so we kind of left that. So tonight, we'll just focus on those ones that are new, that haven't had been analyzed, analyzed, and so forth. And we'll, and we'll start with the middle schools. I want to also address that I know some are, things didn't all equal out at the middle school. We will work hard for our middle schools, working with our community partners and with the district to make sure to fill those gaps as best we can. We will get as good as we can, we won't be able to get perfect. And after that, I think I'll hand it over to Doug for now, and then Carly's gonna have some comments before we get to the high school, if that's okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll start, kind of start at the beginning to level set everybody. So if you remember with the middle school options, we started with middle school option A and middle school option B, and really, they look very similar for everything east of I-29, is kind of the way I look at it. And then the, where then where the two versions diverge is on the west side, which is how to break up the Memorial area into a smaller school. So in option A, we looked at, it basically takes JFK and it moves it to Edison. And that's the, that's the signature of option A. And then option B, we looked at moving the busing area of Oscar Howe, the area that's currently bussed Memorial today, busing him up to George McGovern instead. And so, that's really the, the main difference between those two areas. And then option B also moves everything west of the T Ellis Road up to George McGovern as well. So that's kind of where we started. And then, as you said, since we, if we weren't bringing new ideas here tonight or looking at new things, it would mean we weren't listening, right? And so, I think in Let's Talk, we're up to 900, 1,000 correspondents, and you guys have received probably that much individually in calls and letters. So, and what we were asked to, to look from a district staff for tonight, was to look at option A, which brought JFK into Memorial, or kept JFK in Memorial. So that's really, so when we get to the numbers part, you'll see the option A, JFK to Memorial, that's essentially what that is. So it's moving about 286 kids back to, to Memorial, and you can, we'll see in a minute what the, what the numbers do to that. A2 was a version that came out of the, out of a prior board meeting, or work session, where essentially, it's version A, but it's moving the area west of T Ellis Road up to George McGovern as well. So that's really the difference between A and A2. And then we are also, at that point, also look, asked to look at leaving JFK at Memorial under option A2 as well, so you'll see those numbers. And so, this is what we end up with, at least for current scenarios, for the middle school options, A, option that we have. So we have option A, which has always been one of our original ones. We have option A, which is putting JFK back to Memorial. And you can see, like I said, the biggest swing there is about 286 kids, I think, between, that would swing between Edison back to Memorial. And then, A2 was a scenario that we had previously brought forward, so I'm not highlighting that in yellow, but you can see it there. And then, A2, moving JFK to Memorial 2. So those two yellow bars are essentially the new numbers that we're bringing you tonight. So again, in either scenario, you'll see, you'll basically just see a swing between, in this case, between Edison and Memorial on all of the A versions. And then, of course, we have B, one of our original versions. And B2 was a option that didn't redo boundaries, but it asked us to look at moving honors to Patrick Henry and, and Spanish immersion at Edison, because in the, in the original scenario B, they were, they were both at Edison. So this was looking at them split. So that's essentially the middle school options that are, that you have information on tonight as far as the numbers. We always show the base numbers, and then we show a post, a post-specialty school allocation, because we know that we have the Spanish immersion cohort and the honors cohort that are very large, that we have to make room for in the, in the middle schools somewhere. And so, and then, so we show those post-allocation numbers, depending on where they go. And then, the next page there, you see what the demographics would look like, or as far as the free and reduced lunch numbers for all the various scenarios in each case, and you can, so you can see those. Again, the newer ones that we're bringing tonight are the ones that are highlighted in yellow. So I don't know if at that point you want to stop and have a middle school discussion or ask questions, or you want me to go back on to high school, or?
Let's, let's have our middle school discussion, and then-
Okay.
You want to sit, you can, or you can stand, whatever you prefer.
I'll be honest.
Awesome. Thanks a lot. Okay, I'm opening it up for discussion. I'll just start with option A, JFK to Memorial. Does anyone like, want to discuss that option?
I'm still looking.
You bet.
I'll just say, when I'm looking at the numbers, that puts us back up to that 1,351 students at Memorial Middle School, which their 90% capacity numbers are 1,319. So that would put us starting off right away at over that 90% capacity, and so I feel like that's not a good starting point for, for that, when we know that Memorial is one of our middle schools that we really do need to remove some students from and reduce that from a capacity issue. So I think that's the one thing that's challenging to me about that. From a free and reduced lunch, I don't know that it, I mean, it keeps it the same as it is today, so it's not a win by any means, but we're not worse off than we were before. So I think that number is what would concern me, is that enrollment number.
Any other discussion on JFK to Memorial and option A? I'll move on to then the other new option, which is option A2, JFK to Memorial. I still think that leaves Memorial pretty high in comparison as well. We're really trying to lessen that building, and you know that when the bond task force came forward, it was important for these middle schools to be at a certain number, and that number's way too high for me, my comfort level on that.
I can, I'll just speak to, I agree that the numbers, too. When I'm thinking about, I have a current middle schooler, and I'm thinking about the activities that she participated in, and the number of students who, yes, they got to participate, but it was on a very minimal level, because they had to have so many teams in order to allow everyone. And sometimes those middle school years are the time where you get to explore new activities that you maybe otherwise wouldn't have. And so, I want to make sure that our numbers are allowing as many of those students to explore those activities as they can at the middle school level. And so I think, again, as we look at the capacity numbers, that 1,270 still seems really high when you look at the rest of the schools, and nobody's even over 1,000. So a good 200 number difference doesn't make me terribly comfortable.
And one of the issues we know with JFK is, you know, if you're going east instead of, you're used to going west and traffic and so forth, then we currently run a bus from JFK to Edison for our Spanish immersion and honors program, I believe, a fee bus. And so we already have some bus timing routes, and so I just had V provide that to us, and right now, that bus in the morning is, is a 34-minute ride, and, and the afternoon return is 37 minutes. So it doesn't seem atrocious as a timing thing. It might be more than what they're currently used to, but I don't think it's out of bounds. The thing that helps with middle school is they're leaving at a later time, you know, their start times later than elementary school, so you're not hitting typically that, right, have to be there at 8:00 AM traffic. And their dismissal is, you know, before the 5 o'clock hour as well, so that helps with those bus routes. I realize there will be additional times added to that, because now stops will be added and so forth, but it at least gave us a range of what that timing will be coming and going from Edison to the JFK neighborhood area. Any other discussion on A2 with the JFK addition?
No, I mean, I think I, I agree with, with both of you that, both of those scenarios, just moving, you know, the movement to Memorial just increases the numbers so much that I'm just, I'm not comfortable with, with that starting off point. that I'm just, I'm not comfortable with, with that starting off point.
I think you already know where I stand. I'm going to stick with A. I was appreciative of what the task force brought to us. And I think it made sense. And I think it's, we listened to the, the public. We listened to the task force. And to me, it's the most equitable and makes sense. So A is what I feel the best for.
Thank you, Todd. Naomi, any comments?
I, no, I do, I sit in between option A and the option two, or A2. And not so much from, well, both from a capacity standpoint and from the economic status point. But where you see the largest shift is really that economic status percentage. And so we're, how do we, you know, that, that's the biggest difference between the two as opposed to the, I mean, there's a capacity difference.
And you're speaking between A and A2, correct?
A and A2. Yeah, so we're really, we really just want to hone in on those two and what the largest difference is. It is, it is in both population and socioeconomic difference. But if, if we take both of those, the largest difference is in socioeconomic piece. So, yeah, I would say I'm, I'm sitting right in between the two.
Between A and A2.
I am. And, and then the consideration of, I think we have to look at the other priorities as well. Because those are, those are just two priority areas. I think it's important to us in making a, a final decision to look at the other priorities, priority areas, not safety and wellbeing, you know, budget considerations, common for growth and change. So I think we're looking at it from a lens of just two areas. But in our final decision, I think we pause in the totality of that.
Why I'm leaning towards A2, I think it, for, for me, it hits five of those. And it's, it's accommodating for growth because of that west of T Ellis Road. That's why I promoted that in the first place. I think it is better on the socioeconomic side. Where it is, is, where it might hit is the travel and geography. However, at some point, it, it's not like we're skip bussing them. I feel like it's still contiguous neighborhoods that are going up to George McGovern already under A. So for me, the budget then, the bussing thing in that will all be taken care of. And I feel like that by providing George McGovern a better starting point than they, than they have now, we're addressing that issue as well.
Well, I wonder, given open enrollment, will that shift? Oh, don't we have those figures, don't we post open enrollments for those projections? Okay.
I, I, I don't want to be back here in three years trying to decide what to do with that.
West of T Ellis.
West of T Ellis Road. I think we need to plan for it now. Especially if we're bringing, you know, if we're talking about bringing on another elementary school, you know, up in that George McGovern area, then it's probably going to see some shift up there as well. So I'm personally leaning towards A2. Lean towards A2, given the, the elementary school, the projection of perhaps building one there, keeping those cohorts together on the Lennox area.
Yep. Yep, and the socioeconomics numbers there, yeah.
Do we want to speak to the point of the, some of the statistics that were brought up that refute that growth of that area? So perhaps instead, you know, there's some project, where I'm going with that is there are some projections, growth projections. But I think what we're indicating here is there's another opportunity again if an elementary school is built, where a new cohort of students would be at that elementary school and looking at that elementary school then feeding into a middle school and keeping that cohort together as opposed to growth projections, correct?
And I guess I.
Yeah, clarification to the.
I know. And I guess I would also say that I trust the projections that were provided to the task force as well. And I would give them credence because, just because one person says it's different. I, I would like further research on that. But what we do know, and nobody knows, I mean, nobody has a magic wand to know who's going to build and who's not going to build. What we do know, the facts given today is that land's in the Sioux Falls School District. And that's the facts we're given today. That's the only fact we know. And so using that fact in my mind, it, it makes it that we need to plan for that accommodated growth, regardless of when a developer decides to build and not to build because nobody controls that. We can't control that and we can't predict that. But we do know we own the land over there. Or we don't own it, but it's within our district, I should say.
But I will say there's not a crystal ball, but there are fairly accurate projections on what that growth will look like.
Yes. And that was, the task force considered that.
I was going to say, when I'm looking, what we were given was, in the next five years, was about 250 kids, K through 12. So again, you spread that out over 12 or 13 grades. That is, they're going to go to different schools. You're not going to have 250 kids that are going to be right there at one school, but 250 kids potentially. Again, it's all a projection in the next five years. So I think that, that would be a, a good add to George McGovern and to keep that neighborhood together going that direction when, you know, in the next five years when we have more buildings or more homes that are there.
But we're getting stuck on a very small area potential growth. When we look at, we should be considering the entire area as growth and how those students would go to an elementary school that would need it, be needed in that area to accommodate for the growth, keeping that cohort together to go to same little school and not high school.
Yeah.
Okay.
All good, all good discussions. So thank you, everyone, bringing them forward. Any other? Okay, I think we can move on to high school. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, high school. Going back to what we have, we basically have high school option A and C, which were our, our two original options. And so I would say the signatures there, A was largely built off of middle schools feeding into, into high schools. And so that's sort of the template for A. But then along the way, we heard from, through the task force meetings and whatnot, we heard from the, the community on, on, in the task force on certain areas. One was the area, the north-south border of where Jefferson and Roosevelt would be. And so essentially, option C is making that sort of, 26th Street is the boundary there. So it's, that, that was that option. And then it's sort of a, almost like a counterclockwise thing. And when we did that, when we moved more into Roosevelt, then we had to move some out of, over into Lincoln, really, because Roosevelt would have been too big. And so that area with the blue circle there, it's the area between, I guess, Minnesota and Western there, kind of. We moved into Lincoln, out of Roosevelt. And it's really part of Lincoln today. So we moved that out. And then there's an area up on the northern part of, of the Lincoln area in option A that we moved into, into Jefferson. So it was kind of a shift up that way. And so that's how C was arrived at. Then A2 was really a, a, simply a version of A where we essentially did look at that area between Minnesota and Western and moved that into Lincoln. And that's, that's, that area is, so if you look at it, that area now under A2, sort of that, that Roosevelt-Lincoln border, that's really how it looks today from a, from a high school perspective. So it kind of goes back to that. And then, once we moved more of those kids into Lincoln, then there was an area up in the Whittier section, that, that other circle here where moved some students over from what we had originally had in Lincoln in option A, over into Washington where they go today. It wasn't the whole area, but it was, it was part of that area. And so that was, that was A2, which is nothing new. So then, when we get to new things that we looked at, so you've heard many people here speak tonight from the Chesapeake. We call it the Chesapeake Triangle, the Chesapeake area. It's sort of the area from T Ellis, the green space on Chesapeake, all the way up to 26th Street. Sort of a triangle there. There's about 100 students in there at, at high school level. You consider a high school cohort. And so option, in both option A and option A2, when you get to the numbers part, it's simply moving those, those 100 kids or so from Jefferson down into Roosevelt. And so those were two things that we were asked to look at. And then, again, based on community input and everything, you asked us to look at a blended compromise. You know, since we're getting into A1, A2, I just, we just called it option D, okay? And it's called the blended compromise at this point. We can, to try to keep it a little bit separate. So it's, it's sort of, if you think about it, it's, it's really the way I look at it. It's option A for everything west of I-29. And then on, for everything east of I-29, it's, that's sort of how it's built, except there's a small area up in here, up in the, again, back to that Whittier section, except we don't take all of it. We just go down Cliff Avenue and, and down to 10th Street. And then we move that cohort back, we leave that in Washington, essentially. So that's what the, the new blended compromise, option D, was that we were asked to look at in this scenario. So when we go forward to the numbers part, you'll see the four, the three bars highlighted in yellow are essentially the new, those new items that we're bringing here tonight. So again, the, the top two ones, you're swinging about 100 kids between Jefferson and Roosevelt. That's really the, the changes there. And then option D is sort of an amalgamation of, again, of A and C. And so I, I would point out that option D does not have the Chesapeake, it leaves the Chesapeake area in Jefferson. So just so we're clear on that, we didn't, we didn't move that. Option, option D still has option A from I-29 over. So that's essentially then what you see for, for numbers here. So you can see the enrollment numbers. And then, and you know, as always, we, we have the base numbers that if every kid attended their home attendance center, those are what the numbers would look like. Open enrollment, we build something in. That's sort of, again, we talked about this. This is sort of built on how things look today, right? It doesn't mean it'll look that way in the future, but it layers in something, right? And, and so, and then you get to post-open enrollment headcount. And then, and then the next page, we roll into the free and reduced lunch numbers for those, those different scenarios, both on a pre and a post basis. So that's sort of, that's essentially what we're bringing here tonight. That's, that's new, that hasn't been seen before, but it's been talked about in the, you know, like I said, listening to the community and, and what we've heard since then. So at that point, that's what we have new.
Thank you, Doug. And once again, thank you to your team for running all these quickly so that we could get this out to the public tonight so that before our vote on Monday, we could vet this in the public and be transparent. Some of these options might not even be viable, but we wanted to at least have the public know what we were doing and what we're working on and looking at so that we can get all their feedback on it. Option D was kind of something I was looking at when I was trying to make sure Lincoln was full enough, that we didn't have too much. But yet, because I know one of the concerns was we were leaving too much room for open enrollment. So that's kind of why I was looking at that blending of moving those west of Minnesota Avenue students. One pocket's Jefferson, two pockets are Roosevelt under A. And then to offset that 500-student swing, I put 300 approximately over in Washington, not all of those pockets from Washington. I just kind of wanted to see where that ended up, if it could help or not. In my mind, since I proposed that, I think it's dead in the water because it puts Washington way too high. I felt like it didn't do the swifts, the changes I thought it might do. And it leaves Roosevelt too low. And so in, in population, after all those shifts. So unless anybody else wants to talk about D, I think we can move on from that one. Okay, well then, let's talk about it.
Use your microphone, please.
I mean, you did a nice job. And the, when you look at the socioeconomic, the percentage there, I mean, that seems pretty consistent with what would be the most optional, optimal one, which would be option A. I mean, it's very comparable from a socioeconomic standpoint between those two. And I do see that post-open enrollment, the headcount. Did you feel like that, I mean, was that shift on Roosevelt? Is that primarily what you were concerned about?
I, I think Washington would be too high and Roosevelt would be too low. I'm really trying to, in my mind, we have to push all the buildings to be pretty close to capacity because I'm hopeful that most people will stay where we get them assigned. You know, we have to leave a little wiggle room for programs and so forth and enrollment. But my hope is that we get them there so that not one school can say, hey, we have lots of open enrollment, come to us. You know, and especially, I'm worried about that west side where we're making the biggest changes between Roosevelt and adding Jefferson. I want, I want Roosevelt to be closer to their capacity number than with option D at 1,600. I just feel like it's too low.
And I'll comment on A2 because that was something that I was trying to kind of massage the map to try to figure out. I had heard from several families that live in that western to Minnesota area that they really wanted to keep their kids at Lincoln because it was two and a half miles and the travel across town and things like that. And there seemed to be a significant portion that lived there. And that's one of the things that I liked about C, I think, is because those people were there. And then I also heard from families in the Whittier area who, their whole family has always gone to Washington. And that was, that was something that they really wanted to do. And so was there a way that some people from that area could stay at Washington? And so I thought, well, what happens if we move some of these populations around? And I think kind of similar in line to what Cynthia has said is that leaves a really big gap at Roosevelt because we didn't backfill any students. There just wasn't like a, a specific population that would meet the criteria that we needed to kind of balance the schools. And so that just left then another large hole at Roosevelt and then blowing up the other schools as well. And so for me, even though A2 was one of the things that I had suggested, I don't know that it's something that I can really support, but it's something that I wanted to explore based on the feedback that we had gotten from parents who had asked about those two specific areas.
And I appreciate that we, we all should be bringing things forward and do that. And, and why we called the work session was to allow the public to view that too. So I know some people thought maybe it was to change things at Lincoln and so forth. It truly was in response to people reaching out to us. And then we vetted it and now we see it. And I agree with Carly, looking at A2, from the building perspective size, as well as when I look at what the socioeconomic swings between especially Lincoln and Washington. After that happened, I don't think that's fair to Washington to do that. So I'm, I'm not in favor of A2 as well. Any further discussion on A2?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree. You know, after looking at the, the data with those options and certainly hearing from families and teachers, you know, saying, we don't think this is, this is right. I certainly was about to mix that idea as well, just because the feedback, because of the feedback that I received.
I can't see you, I'm too short. Thank you. Okay, should we go into option A with Chesapeake?
I, I do think that that is a natural boundary. I would be in favor. I do think that that is a natural boundary. I would be in favor of moving that section. I mean, it does obviously increase the numbers at Roosevelt a little bit, brings down the socioeconomic just a little bit. But I think that that, just knowing that natural boundary is over there, and the proximity to Roosevelt, just makes sense to me.
So, it would still, so the Option A with Chesapeake would be, the post-open enrollment headcount would be 2,051, compared to that capacity of 90% number of 1,901.
Are you looking at Roosevelt?
Right, Roosevelt.
Roosevelt, okay, I want to make sure.
And then you have 34% free and reduced, in comparison to the current of 28, for Option A of 35. So, it makes a 1% difference.
I can certainly appreciate the, the distance and the location of the, those neighborhoods to Roosevelt High School as well.
I'm wondering, Doug, could you explain why Lincoln would go down in Option A with Chesapeake versus Option A in economic, post-open enrollment, economic?
Those people that open enrollment.
I'm just thinking that's the same, the pockets only west, so that, I was just curious why it went down one.
Could be a rounding thing, too.
Yeah.
If it's 1%, but if it's like a decimal point issue, you know what I mean?
I just would have thought it wouldn't have changed. I didn't think either Washington or Lincoln would change on either, just because that pocket was west, that's why it's, on Option A versus Option A with Chesapeake.
Oh, yeah.
So, let's just call them both the point halves between the two. It'll come 47 and a half for Washington and...
Are you looking at the post-open enrollment?
Yep.
Also, post-open enrollment.
No, I was, both of them are post-open enrollment.
It's the same before.
So, I'm looking at post-open enrollment A, and I'm looking at post-open enrollment A2. Yeah, yeah. And we moved nobody east, so that's why, yeah. So, I'd say it's 39 and a half, yeah.
It's, you're right, they shouldn't have changed A.
So, the economic would really, where we're going to see the swing is the 1% for the better at Roosevelt, but 3% at Jefferson. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, it's 100 students, it's, it's not going to change that much. It probably would help, yeah, Jefferson probably go down a very small amount.
I just wanted to make sure. I was like, that's where I was hung up on something. Okay.
So, I guess for me, looking at all of the priorities, I would not be opposed to Option A with Chesapeake, because the differences are so slight. And if you look at the distances that the families are, you know, in relation to Roosevelt, I would not be opposed to kind of amending that one to include those two areas.
And I, I could look at that. I, I struggle with opening a building with 1,500 students. That's where I'm struggling, but I do see the Chesapeake concern. So, I guess what we need to do is figure out how to get some west central students there. But, that's where I struggle, because I totally get the Chesapeake driving issue, the location and all that. And we need some more housing up at Jefferson. And I don't think we need to do Chesapeake A2, because we're doing A2, so I just wanted to scratch that out before I do that. So, what we're left with, since we've eliminated Option D and Option A2 with Chesapeake, and Option A2 is itself, is Option A, Option A with Chesapeake, and Option C. Correct?
I think for me, when I look at Option C, I just feel like that is a lot of students at Lincoln. It's got that post-enrollment headcount of 3,500, or 3,355, which Lincoln's capacity at 90% is 1,879. So, that is a huge number of students over. And so, I struggle with that from a safety perspective of having, I know Roosevelt's been doing that, and I don't know that we would ever wish that on somebody else. And so, having that many students in the building is a lot. I also, you know, it's got Jefferson at 52% free and reduced lunch, so I would like to see that come down as much as we could, so that we didn't have anybody at least over 50. And so, I feel like I get those in both Option A and Option A with Chesapeake, at least. Those two things are satisfied.
I would support along with C, for the reasons that we've talked about. Todd, I guess I haven't, do you have comments on C, thoughts?
Let's talk about that.
Would you put your mic up, too?
What's that?
Todd, close to your mic, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can, thank you.
It's, again, I'm putting some weight into the task force, and I feel like it's, I realize Lincoln's got some more students in it. I think we've listened to the people, and from reading the emails, listening to people that have come talk to us, listen to the public discussion, I just think that this is the cleanest version for me.
I think one thing I just want to comment on is that we've talked a little bit about open enrollment today, and I know that, I'll speak for myself, in that there were a lot of things that I didn't know about open enrollment, and what the policy contained. And so, I have come to that acknowledgement, obviously, and I think many of us have too. And many of the people who had emailed us with their concern, similar people shared a Maya Angelou quote that said, "Do the best you can until you know better, and when you know better, do better." And I think that that's the where, that's the place that we, or at least I'm at, from an open enrollment standpoint, is I really want to do better for our community, and I want to make sure that all of our students go to schools, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, at a location that is set up in the best way to make them successful. And so, we understand as a board, and I think I can say this for all of us, we understand that there is no honors program at Lincoln High School. We are very well aware of that. I think one of the challenges is that we can't just end something and have 400 students leave a building. As Jamie, as Dr. Nold mentioned, it's a state law. So, what we need to do is we need to set up boundaries that help to equalize that. We need to revise the policy, so that going forward, we can make those changes. But those changes are going to have to cycle through. Students are going to have to graduate before we say, these students are now going to attend their home attendance area. So, while we maybe all wish we could say, I'm sorry, all you people that open enrolled to Lincoln that didn't need to be there, need to leave, that's not possible. And so, I hope, I see a lot of head nodding, so I appreciate that, because I want that to be the message, is that we didn't set this up to benefit anyone high school, but we're dealing with the cards that we were given. And so, it's up to us, now that we know better, to do better, and to be able to make those changes, so that all of our schools, all of our teachers, all of our students and families can have a lot of pride in the school that they attend, because they're very proud of that school, and because they all offer amazing opportunities for our kids. And so, I think we all kind of have had these side conversations, I think that's how we feel. So, please know, when we look at Lincoln numbers, it's not that we're trying to save a place for anybody, but these kids go there, and they have to be there. So, we can't not have them in our numbers, and just pretend it didn't happen. But we can hopefully plan to maybe start a little higher, and graduate some of those students out, to bring those numbers down. We just want that to be a long-term situation for that building.
Doug, how many Spanish immersion are at Lincoln?
Right now, it's, it's...
I can tell you that.
I think 90 or something, very small right now. It'll grow over time.
And over time, then we would split the, they would have to go to two different high schools eventually.
Yeah, about a third are already in the Lincoln...
Boundary.
...area. So, you know, if you kind of think about it that way, so, but yeah, it'll grow to 400 or more, and a third of those would already be in Lincoln. So, yeah, I think in some point down there, 2024 or something, it could be split to a different school, I think is what Dr. Boyson has said, so.
And I think the fallacy is that some people think, might think, all of those seats are, a great majority of those open enrollment are Spanish, and they are not. They're both in district and out of district, open, purely open enrollment, not programmatic related. Correct?
So, so if you had, I mean, if you had 400 split in two, 200 and 200, you know, probably 100, some of those would already be Lincoln kids, right? So, your open enrollment, incremental open enrollment wouldn't be that much greater, right? So, as you said, over time, you will work that down.
Yeah, and unlike other, you guys all touched on this too, but unlike other populations, the classes that Spanish immersion take are only offered at Lincoln. So, it's not an option for the program to be split into, you know, or to have, if you only have 25 kids in 10th grade, you can't have four people go to one school, and 12 go to another high school. Like, it doesn't make sense from a teaching staffing perspective. You have to have the teacher to teach the class. And so, until we get to that volume of students, and it makes sense to be able to have a teacher, like people have mentioned, maybe they teach in the morning at one school, and the afternoon at another, that's totally possible. And I think some of that time, you know, Sonia was built in the middle of the town, in the middle of Sioux Falls. And so, now it's drawn a lot more west-side families, where before it was at Rosa Parks, and it was a very heavily east-side program. And now that you're drawing more people from all over town, which was the point, now it makes sense to grow, to have maybe a west and an east, or, you know, different types of schooling. And then we can expand it to different groups, when we have our different schools, and we have the numbers to support that. But in the meantime, that's not really an option, as far as having students. We do have a handful of people who drive from Roosevelt, or Washington, or even Old Gorman and Harrisburg. But I think if you looked at the history, you'd find that those students last about a year. And then that's a big commitment to make, to leave your high school, drive across town. We're talking about safety and driving. And so, not everyone can do that. And so, that's why it is offered at one, and that's why they do get the letter to say, come to Lincoln, because that's where those classes are offered. It's not to recruit them, it's because that's where their educational, their bilingual education is available, so.
Yeah, I think the original kindergarten class is going to be seniors.
Uh-huh.
I guess that just proves how old Kent and I were, who was up, so.
Left.
How far, how far it's been, and how far it's come, so.
Yeah, and so this fall, there will be a total of 118 students at Lincoln, and about 83 of them are open enrolled. So, it's not a huge population, but it will grow.
The, there was a motion on the floor. Do I have a second, or?
Sorry, what was the motion? I wasn't paying attention.
Anne made a motion, yeah.
I don't know that I made a motion, I was just...
Oh, okay. Oh, you said motion. So, I, I heard motion, so I thought, I better come back to you. So, don't...
Are you ready?
Do you want to not have it?
Sure. I want it, Todd, actually.
Yeah. Todd made his statement, too, so. No, not, nothing. So, I didn't, there was a motion, so I just wanted to come back to her motion, if there was a second. If there's no second, there's, it fails. So, I just, she, she made the motion to remove Option C.
Remove it?
Yeah, from consideration. There has not been a second, so I just wanted to make sure I followed part of elementary procedure, and that's why I wanted to do that. So, for going forward for Monday's meeting, the three that we will vote upon would be A, A with Chesapeake, and Option C. And then for, for high school, and for middle school, will be, I want to make sure I have this all right, I believe it's A2 and A, right? Is that correct? A2 and A for middle school?
Yep.
And we will not be adding any more data points, Doug. Thank you for that. Yeah, I just said it out loud in front of a lot of people.
You can ask all you want, we'll get it to you. So, I know it's a hard job you guys got, so we're happy to provide you with whatever you guys need.
All right, so I'm just writing this down. We've got high school A, A2...
Not, A Chesapeake.
Right, right, right. A, A, so.
A with Chesapeake and C.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, I appreciate, you know, obviously, all the work that the task force put together, or all the work that the boundary committee did to bring us these options. And I, I certainly hope that they don't think that we are ignoring them, because, you know, we, we really looked at those, and then because they were out for community comment, and we received emails and comments from, from families and teachers, and, and everyone in the community, you know, we had to be a little bit fluid with them, and appreciate Doug's team, and Doug, and, you know, putting together all of these different scenarios. But again, it's not a, it's not a, certainly not a slap in the task force face, because just really appreciate all the work they put into it. But we had to do our due diligence and, and consider all the different options that were brought to us. So, again, just thank everybody for, for bringing all of these forward, because I think it really made us think, and contemplate, and reflect on what we, you know, ultimately will need to do, which is do the best thing for the entire school district, all 20, almost 25,000 students, so.
Good question.
Yeah, Todd.
It may have already been answered, but I've got too many...
There's a lot of numbers going around, believe me, I'm spinning, too.
What is, so, we have 550 open enrolled at Lincoln. Is that correct?
550 net is probably about where Lincoln sits today.
Okay. And so, that would be why we're so full at Lincoln.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's the Spanish immersion program, right, that's there, that's, you gave the numbers. And then, we have the, what, the honors cohort, I'm not going to say the honors program.
Program it, yeah.
You know, which is, I don't know, it's 30 kids a class, maybe. The rest of the open enrollment, I think we showed that one chart, it comes from Washington, from the southern part, right?
Right.
And you see the out-of-district enrollment's about 150, but, you know, and then on the other side, you see that sort of the areas over in, you know, the western Kiwanis, you know, come in as well. So it's, it's kind of, that's where kind of the open enrollment comes from for a variety of reasons, right?
And probably Harrisburg from the south because it's closer, easier to drive than it is to go into.
Just up at 229, yeah.
But we also know today, like Patrick Henry is, is split, right? So you get some change there once now that there, you know, that some of those elementary schools now to go to Ben Rifele, maybe there'll be less of that open enrollment because that, or wants to stay together. As I said, we'll know as the years go by what the open enrollment patterns change to. But we're, we're just kind of, at this point, showing there what, what we've been running or what's really in the pipeline at this point that will, as Dr. Knowles said, we have to honor as they move through.
And I don't, I don't think we're looking at these options to solve for Lincoln. I mean, we are looking at all options to see what is best for all of our high schools.
Right.
You know, so as Carly's, I think very well said, we have a current problem with open enrollment currently into Lincoln that we will have to solve, but it, but the numbers are there now, and because of state law, we can't do anything about it.
And that's just what I was getting at, is we're, Lincoln's got a lot of people in it, and I think it will eventually dissipate to other schools. So that's, I really like C for every reason, and I know that you're worried about the people in there, but I think that's going to dissipate over the next two years, or more, or more. It's hard, I don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know, but I'm just trying to justify why I'm the only one saying C.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciate that. Right now, as it stands, the economic, when we look at the economic status percentage between C and the other two, C puts Jefferson right at 52%, and it doesn't, it doesn't create as much of the equity across the board with the other two options as it looks right now. And that's just the glaring piece of it that I see as a difference between the other two, but that, that doesn't mean that we just use one priority area in, in deciding which, how to, you know, which boundary to go, which map to go to with.
Thank you all for sticking with us for this long time. Monday night, 5:30, final input, final vote. You all probably have our emails, I think I've received from all of you. So we're still.
If not, they're on the district website.
Exactly. And thank you very much. This was exactly how government is supposed to work. You guys were awesome, your comments were spot on, and we really, really appreciate how you approached all of us. So thank you very, very, very much. So do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.